I'd like to call this regular council meeting on December 6th to order. We have three public hearings today. And we're going to go into the first one here in a second.
Yeah, I'll do better comments than just before we go into the public hearings as I run vacation rental.
The value as well as the solicitor's kind of relationship.
The first public hearing has to do with the zoning amendment by law number 2148, Vacation Rental at 424 Third Street East. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council in this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard in this meeting. No one will be, or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review and buyer located at the sign-in table. This opening statement is going to apply to the next two public hearings as well. And I'd like to ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, Your Worship, 424 Third Street East. We did receive public submissions, five. And five were opposed. One letter from the property owner explaining his intentions.
Okay. I do have a speaker's list set up, and I have names of those who wish to speak. I will be going out to the public for a minimum of three times, and people can get up and speak as much as they'd like, as long as the subject that they're talking about is different each time. So, before we get started, I'd like to ask Mr. Strachan, do you have a short presentation course?
Just very brief, the first public hearing is on 424 Third Street.
So, looking at the speaker's list, the applicants are here, and it has indicated that they wish to speak. So Bryce Dobbin, you are, you have the podium, sir. Would you come up to the podium to state your name and your address, please?
My name's Bryce Dobbin. My address is 801 Temple Street. And the address we're applying for is 424 Third Street East.
And Bryce's partner, Ashley Bortles.
We are the property owners of 424 Third Street. I'm originally from New Zealand. First came to Canada 10 years ago. And we met Ashley here in Riverside. And we've lived here for the last eight years. Ashley and I brought this house in May for a long-term rental. And at present, that still may be the plan. However, upon notice of the capping of the availability for vacation rentals, we applied for the rezoning, and we would like the option of short-term rentals. I'd like to commend the council for the structure and regulations of the rezoning bylaws, of which I believe are geared towards maintaining existing commercial business revenue, protecting neighbors from year-round operations, and also places some regulations on short-term stage within the community. I'd also like to thank all of our neighbors for sitting for submitting comments and concerns. It's always nice to hear perspectives from the other side of the fence. And it was not intention of Alphu upset or disrespecting of you, and this is being quite a stressful application for Ashley herself. In response to some of the concerns within our neighborhood, a portion of these seem to be somewhat pre-existing issues and concerns, such as the Third Street parking and snow removal issue, which has been ongoing since I moved onto Third Street back in 2008. We're planning to promote the new and existing services that provide transport to and from Riverside, such as the Colonial Airport to Riverside Transfer, and the new this year red flights to Vancouver, to minimize bringing guests, bringing multiple vehicles to our rental. However, as per the application, parking for the guests will be the rear of the property, and there'll be room for three spaces as per the council regulations. Snow removal will be done by the means of a heated driveway to a soap cushion storage bit, to minimize any water runoff. Any additional snow removal will be done by Ashley here, who's been doing the crossfit quite often, she's more than capable of the job. She'll also be managing the property. I also noticed most of the concern directly towards winter rentals, which mean, which mention sled rentals, sorry, sled trailers, snow removal, parking, parking, parking. That's a big concern. Of the 120 days a year of rental days, that could potentially, some of those could potentially be through the summer, to families here for sporting events, timber days, play some shows, baseball, hikers, mountain bikers, et cetera. Riverside Summer of 2016 had an increase of 30 percent visitors, and our house will be set up for these families, whether they be hikers, bikers, or here for the mountain coaster, which we can be sure to accommodate such, a lot more comfortably in hotels, with the usual amenities like a bike wash area, mudroom, family room. And who doesn't like to go out and wine on a nice front porch? Just think of our greater experience would be for a guest if one of our neighbors stopped to chat, gave us some history, recommended some places to see, and some background on Riverside. Most of the people who live in Riverside came here for a week and haven't left. And all we are trying to do is give these people an awesome Riverside experience. Sometimes it's easier to stop change and progression due to the perception that's related to that change. It's easier to put up a barrier or fence against it. However, I see the city of Riverside open and willing to embrace progression, change, growth, and then see an enhanced potential of our community. We hope the city of Riverside Council accepts our application. This is positive progression for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that indicated they wish to speak is Morten Sharon Refuse. Or should I say Mort or Sharon Refuse?
Yeah, they're exactly.
Your Worship, councilors. My name is Mort Refuse, my wife Sharon over here. We live at 418 Third Street East. We've lived there for just over 41 years, and have enjoyed the fact that our neighborhood has really been consistent over that period of time with people who own a home, live in their home, and enjoy and partake in the neighborhood that we have. I think we're probably the second longest-term people in that part of Riverside. I think the other person, another guy that's here today, Jim Abramson, he's been there just a bit longer than we here. Our concern, yeah, two concerns, or I have two concerns, my wife has a lot more than I do. It's such a change to our neighborhood. This is, this is not something that I think we want in a neighborhood as a vacation rental. When I, when I talked to the couple that are doing this property, they indicated to me that this was strictly long-term rental. And now that has changed. Now, whether that's because the city's put pressure on them to, to change this to a vacation rental, I'm not sure. It just brings way too many problems to our neighborhood, and we, we don't think it's, it's a good thing for our neighborhood in general. Communities, towns, everything is built on different neighborhoods. And our neighborhood consists of a group of people who own their homes and live there, and we're there for a reason. And that's because it's, it's a great location for all of us, has been for the 41-plus years that Sharon and I have been living there. And I think we kind of like to keep it that way. Long-term rental could work out fine, but short-term vacation rental is, is not something that we really want to live in. The other reason is the parking problem. And that's consistent through everyone else in our neighborhood is the parking situation. I know Bryce indicates that they have three parking spaces in the back. Well, maybe, I've looked at it. I can't imagine having three vehicles parked in the back of that property. Certainly not in the wintertime. So that means the street is where they're mostly going to park. And, and all we need is a bunch of snowmobiles laying down with huge trailers and pickup trucks that will take up at least the whole block. You know, and they park in front of my home, you know, park in front of the property next door. Leon is planning on building a house on sometime in the near future. And it's a 25-foot lot, so you can't, you can't do much on a 25-foot lot as far as parking. It's really difficult for snow removal in the wintertime. And, and it's also creates a real dangerous situation, I think, with the traffic that comes up Vernon Avenue on Third Street. And it's missing the window, and there's a huge big window of snow down the street. There's potential for some new problems. The other thing that I'm concerned about, we're concerned about, is that once this property is rezoned to vacation rentals, there's no turning back after that. That's my understanding of it anyway. A new owner of that property, possibly, the current owners, they may think that it's a long-term, all that. The new owners, we don't understand what could happen. So, so I think we have to look at long-term of this. And, and the people in our neighborhood, I don't think, kind of deserve to have that inflicted on us, that we can't really do anything about in the future. So, I'm hoping that we can convention here this afternoon that this rezoning should not go ahead, and that it should be maintained as either a residential or a long-term rental property, but not to be a vacation rental.
Good. Thank you. Sharon, has he done a good enough job, or do you have to go up and say something to? You're okay? Jim Abramson has indicated they wish to speak.
Good afternoon. I'm not very good to be in the setup. But to me, here's a concern is, in matter of time, I have to park my car on my front yard. So, if I'm giving any protection, and people want to park right in front of my car. And, so, as you say, we don't make snow removal. You know, they park in the sidewalk, well, they may. And what are they going to, if it does go to a vacation rental, how are we going to stop people from having parks? I mean, there's skiers, they're going to park, slenders, they're going to park. You know, that's my two big concern, because I've had people, you know, I parked in front of mine, I've had people already parked in front of my car. And I can't get out. You know, my motion's sick of motion, anything happens, I've got to be able to get out. I can't have somebody parked in front of my house, and I can't claim it. I think Mort said a few things. Well, what my concern to our fewest major is snow removal on Third Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Jim Abramson, I live at 426 Third Street. Heard about.
Sean Aquiline.
Thank you, Your Worship, council. My name's Sean Aquiline. I live at 430 Third Street East. I think Mort pretty much expressed the large majority of some of the issues that concern us, but some of them are that, he did say, once it's changed, it's changed. You know, Bryce might be fantastic at it, but at one point, if he ever sells a house, there's an issue down the line that can't be revoked. The parking in the back is, he's got a plan, it's great. Mort paced personally for the snow removal in the back. It doesn't necessarily affect me right on the corner, but being that I can't park, I don't have parking back there. Neither does Jill beside me. So we're forced to park on the street. It doesn't take much to start clogging it up. And I don't think parking is a matter of saying no to change. I don't think it has anything to do with that. I'm just about a reality of where we live. Jill's house to my property line is no more than four feet, less than four feet. And that's pretty much standard around town. And we all know that you're going to hear a lot of the same things on this street, the next street you're dealing with, a previous one that was, that was up and was denied for the exact same reasons. So we could go over a long list of those, but I think you already know where we're coming from. They said they're looking for a 30 percent increase coming in, and it's not just sleds. Okay, let's talk about the summertime. The one thing about Jerry living there previously was that you get to know your neighbor, you can talk to your neighbor, you work out your schedule. I know Jill's van, she knows my van. I know when Kathy gets up from work, I know her granddaughter is across the street. There's all sorts of things that are going to be played into it. Safety is also one. There's a little girl that lives across the street. There is a new family that moved in across from me, I don't have their exact address, that have children playing there. Yes, they're not on the street, it has nothing to do with parking, but it's the overall concept of the reality. And what Mort was talking about, about keeping what that was about in that neighborhood, and having that family mentality. No, that's fine. I'm sure rentals will come in, and some will be great, and some will be respectful. I'm sure we've all rented houses somewhere in another neck of the woods, whether it's the lakes or wherever. And we respect those people's property. But summertime is just as much of an issue as it is in the winter. Sleds, fine. But baseball, glacier challenge. So they're down at Glacier Challenge, and the parking has run all the way up the road. I have nowhere to park. I don't have a parking lot in my lot. The previous, previous owners sold that lot to the city. So I have one little patch of grass on the side that I can technically park on. Public works turns a blind eye because there's nowhere else to go when the snow hits. Because then what that means is that Sean moves his van under Vernon Avenue, Jill moves her vehicle under Vernon Avenue, Jim parks on his grass, and the snowplow comes. All it takes is a couple of cars that are not aware of our schematics and how the snow removal works, for them to go around at once, and then they have to come back around again at a later time. Two, by doing this, by approving it, it means their house, their property value goes up. That's fantastic. Are they going to be taxed based on that? So those are some of the concerns and issues that I have. I do know that there are obstacles if I want to tear down my shed and rebuild back there. So with, with us not having the appropriate plans and approval to even build a garage for ourselves, the city's strong-arming us to park in front of our own properties. And if you remove that, we've got a bigger problem because we're adding to the problem by blocking up Norbert's property over on Vernon Avenue. So we're just adding to the congestion with more congestion. So although that's going to be a probably large staple of what you're going to hear tonight is about parking, I don't think it has anything to do with saying no to change. I, I think long-term is fine. You can work out parking schedules and arrangements with the neighbors that you know on a regular basis. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. The next person on the list that said they would speak is Leon Grimms.
Mayor and Council, Leon and Jill Grimms. We own the, they come off at 424 Third Street. Begin with just congratulating the owners, Bryce and Ashley in particular here, how they have improved the building. They've done a lot of work, so we're very happy about that. Our intention, regardless of what happens here, is to be good neighbors with them, as we hope to be good neighbors with everyone else. I'm going to reiterate some of our concerns, but as everyone else has mentioned. I did submit a letter to the council, and we do receive it, and mentioning some of the concerns. Vehicle traffic, we've discussed, I guess part of the thing. My concern is that, like many of us, we go to the place of least resistance. There might be parking available in that, but sometimes in the wintertime, we have a tendency, it's a little bit more snow, or whatever, to park on the street, or just because it's not as easy. So, the path of least resistance often means that it affects how the people live by your choice of parking. Prior to it, I know we talked with Bryce and Ashley about our concerns and the afterfacts about that. They, you know, wanted to assure, reassure us that they have a handle on while looking after those things. But sometimes, while you're going through it that night, or you know, you can't get a hold of them, it's, it's very frustrating to have to deal with someone that doesn't, aren't being as respectful as they possibly can. It's just a little issue of being able to monitor it. Really, the concern, I guess, is of the short-term vacation rentals. And even in the summer, where you might have a longer term, short term, is that we're evolving the aura of people coming into your neighborhood that with little or no investment in the neighborhood. I think one of the strengths of this particular neighborhood, in fact, it's part of the heritage zone, which has a long history in and of itself, is that there is continuity, continuity of people that have stayed there, and lived there, and built relationships. So if you do have issues with your neighbor, or you want to know who your neighbor is, you can actually go and speak to them, just because of the fact that they're living there. We're for long-term rentals. In fact, I was, I believe that was what was going to be happening. And I understand where Bryce is sharing the feeling of being caught between not applying and not, and not being able to apply. But I guess my question is, is if you're concerned about not applying for short-term rental, and your focus is still long-term rental, why do you even bother applying for short-term rental to begin with? It would seem to me that if long-term rental is your focus, then being here for even an application for a short-term rental is non-sensible. It just doesn't seem to follow my mind raising anyway to that. So, I think that pretty much covers it. I would hope that we could find a happy medium where there, where we recognize that long-term rentals are positive, and that we can continue to build on the relationships that already exist and that. So, thank you very much.
So the next person I have on the list is, I think, John Warren. But I think, John, you put your name down on the wrong, so, but I had to ask you. So, I've already transferred your name over to the next public hearing. Next person on the list that indicated they wish to speak is Jill Zacharias.
Thanks, Mark. So, just to give you kind of a schema, so far, you've heard from Mort, Leon. They're beside the proposed vacation rental, very, very close to it. Jim Abramson's place is like five feet away from the proposed vacation rental. And it's a 25-foot lot, Jim's against it. And then we're another three or four feet down. So, the proposed vacation rental is 25 feet from my front door, and then Sean from the first end. So all of the neighbors on that side of the street are opposed. Have these directly across the street. And, you know, the people who lived there before, like Bryce and Ashley could be really conscientious property owners, but they've purchased the property with never any intention to live there. They own a house on Temple, which is their primary residence. So, it's obviously an investment, and they've done a fantastic job of fixing up the place. It looks really great, and it's good to see the neighborhood improving. But it's obviously an investment. So they could be really, really good landlords for the vacation rental, but they might, they probably want to sell it in a couple of years. So, and then we're going to have to deal with this again, and again, and again. And every single time it snows, it's this dance of we all have to move our vehicles. Because if we don't get plowed out, we don't have parking in front of our house, and groceries, skis, whatever you want. We have to, we need to have access to our properties. In 2012, David and I went and we spoke with the planning department about building a carport in the back. And they said our property is too small. Saying what Sean in person wanting to tear down their shed and build a little garage can't do, if the property is too small. So they, they're going to fit three cars in the back. And they just, you know, we, we also own another property that has parking in the back, and it's, we've got, and parking is on 25 feet. And you can't fit two cars back there. And we cleared the snow, and we put it on the rest of our property. If there's any snow we've cleared, they can't put it on Leon's, they can't put it on Jim's, they can't put it in the Uproo parking lot, they can't put it in Allen's, because everybody pays privately to remove the snow in the back. The city doesn't file the Al. So, their snow is going to cost, if they put it in the Uproo parking lot, it's going to cost those guys money to take away their snow. And it's great to hear that it's going to be heated, but we get a three-foot snowfall, or a two-foot snowfall. They're going to have to remove the snow before, and they will not have any place to put the snow. So, this, like already, it's the parking, as you can hear, is somewhat stressful for it, for us all. But we all mitigate it by talking to our neighbors, by developing those relationships, which are established over time. Jerry and Shirley lived in that middle house for 15 years before these guys bought it. And the guy before that, Dave and his three kids, he lived there for nine years. We lived in our house for 24. So, I just, you know, this is going to have a huge impact on our lives. And we appeal to you to consider that long-term impact. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've gone through the speaker's list, and the floor is open for anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this zoning amendment by law number 2148, which is 424 Third Street East. The floor is open.
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Melnick. I live at 406 Robinson Avenue. I think it's unfortunate that the vacation rental application process has been a little bit lonesided for applicants. I think there's some room for a collaborative conversation to be had so that we can find some kind of middle ground. You know, I understand the process is also very narrow in scope because we only have so many options as far as rezoning goes. But in the interest of collaboration, I approached Ms. Borlace so that we could talk about what her intentions are, look at the bigger context of what she and Bryce are looking for, and then what the neighborhood needs are. So, in doing that, we did find quite a bit of common ground, actually. But, you know, most of the concerns are around some logistics, the parking, some removal, that kind of thing. But also worries about the longer-term implications, that if there's a rezoning that's quite permanent, and then that way, we've opened the can of worms. We don't know what's going to happen down the line. So although we might have a lot of confidence in the current owners, the only structure that is available right now is a rezoning, which, like I said, is quite permanent. So, Ms. Borlace and I feel like it would be wonderful if there was some opportunity to attach the vacation rental status to the applicant, which then would be dissolved upon sale of the property. And I know that doesn't exist right now, but looking at a non-transferable vehicle to still allow current applicants to achieve the investment opportunity that they're looking for, might be some kind of middle ground that could work better. So, I'm just asking that as we move forward with the vacation rental process, we look at potentially a more proactive approach. I do understand that the business license layer will provide a little bit of, I guess, radiation should the vacation rental not be well managed. But that is more of a stick than a carrot. And so a proactive approach, I think, would sit well with everybody, opponents and applicants alike, and potentially not put Mayor and Council so much in the middle of having to make this judge and jury decision. The other concern that I had was around the attacks on the rental market. And so I have spoken to Mr. Strachan about this, which I really appreciate because he was able to give me a little more context that I didn't have. But much of my work in the community involves supporting people who are either struggling or in crisis. And for most people, having some kind of reliable housing gives them the stability to move forward in life. So it's, it's a very big piece of my work. And I'm not entirely sure what the impact is of vacation rentals on the housing, and specifically the rental market. of vacation rentals on the housing and specifically the rental market. Yeah, I do understand that there's a balancing effect that may exist, where there have been a number of illegal vacation rentals, and now that the legalization process is happening, those will transfer over into either legalized in the 125 beds that are available, or else they would be put back into long-term rental housing stock, which would be great, but I would like to know how, how many of those illegal suites or rentals are going back into long-term housing. That would provide a great level of reassurance to me, especially in my work in the community. Also, looking at the housing continuum that we have in Revelstoke and then, I guess, the accommodation continuum, where with accommodations, we need to have a certain number of vacation rentals. There are people who are going to want to vacation in Revelstoke, and will only want to come for vacation rental experience, and I think that the 5% of, the equivalent of 5% of our hotel beds as vacation rentals feels about right for the percentage that we would have, but again, if we had an overarching view of what the housing continuum looks like, you know, knowing that we're missing emergency housing, we're missing supportive housing, we're missing a lot of affordable housing, of below-market value housing and apartments, or at-market value apartments, all we really have are single-family loans at market value. And so, without having that bigger context of our housing continuum, then it feels uncomfortable for me to move forward with the vacation rental process, knowing, not knowing how that fits into the housing continuum. Other than that, I just wanted to say that I definitely support Ms. Borlace as an applicant. After having a conversation, I definitely feel like there is some middle ground, and unfortunately, the current vacation rental options, being a rezoning, don't really fit the solution that any of us are looking for. Also, it's unfortunate there aren't two rental spaces in that property, because then they might qualify for the subcategory of vacation rentals, just having a part of the property as a vacation rental. That would probably provide a lot of reassurance to the direct neighbors, but if in the future there is a reexamination of this property, should it not be approved today, I would definitely recommend that this property be reexamined with a different context and different opportunities that might be available for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council on anything so far? You can make your way up to the podium if you'd like.
Sure. Bryce Durbin, the advocate for the project, I'd like to address a few concerns again. Revelstoke is a changing city, and we would like the short-term rental wherever we can. As to the approved vacation rentals that can be sold, I mean, we're not opposed to having the option of the vacation rental being non-transferable. I know that's currently not the case, but if it were, that's, we wouldn't mind that by any means. The property we purchased had renters in it for the last 18 years, and as a landlord, there's no deciding whether you get a long-term renter or a short-term renter in it. Headrenters can move out whenever, so it's not always, you don't always choose, get to choose the right candidates, right? I'd also like to reiterate the somewhat pre-existing issues of Third Street, a lot of snow removal issues, parking. We're not introducing any new issues here. We're actually helping taking out some of the parking because, and putting in a heated driveway will solve some of that. I'd like to present a photo, if I may, of the parking in behind our, in behind our property deck. As you'll see, there's two cars parked there, a full-size truck and a car with no problem, and side by side, you can fit four cars in there, no problem. So, as far as we're concerned, it's not an issue for, for the neighbors or anyone out in front there. 125, 120 days of the year, so it's not going to be full-term anyway, so you have put some good limitations on that to protect the neighbors. We felt that's pretty fair. Parking has to be regulated. We invested a significant amount of money in most local businesses over the last six months in renovating this place, and we're quite proud of that. Last thing we want to see is someone coming in, shoring you of that sort. We're looking at the situation this briefly. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open for anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this zoning amendment by law.
I've been pressured, and they had said, well, so will the parking stuff. I'm more concerned about noise. I get up 4:00 AM to go to work in the morning. I don't want to be woken up at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning with a bunch of yachts out there screaming and yelling, because my concern is, do I owe the police or should I just owe one of you guys? I mean, you've owned it in, it's your baby. Why should I waste taxpayers' money owing the police for the parties, right? And also, the plan I seen, I seen one bathroom for six, eight people, that doesn't make any sense. I, myself, my senior granddaughter want to see somebody here and maybe over the deck, like, that's just not right. So, I mean, those are my concerns, and the parking, of course, because we're always blocked there, even when I, and we park in our yards in the winter, ruin our yards just so you guys can plow it nice. That's a busy road, right? I mean, so we all park where we can. You start lining up snowbells and sleds, where's the plows going to put the snow? Where are they gonna, they're gonna plow it into our yards where we don't want them to be. We shovel enough, I get up 4:00 in the morning just to shovel to the, to the, so those are my concerns, the noise, the parking, and one bathroom. I just don't agree with that, not with seven to eight, or six, eight people in there. I mean, we have four in our house and we have two bathrooms, and that's dead wrong enough, so those are my concerns.
If you wish to phone any of my counselors at any time of the day, right, feel free.
Speed's the stuff.
Just, I'm actually plumbed in a secondary bathroom, roped it in.
The floor is open.
I do, I have a concern about the parking in the back. I think it's great that it's heated, like Jill said. I think they, he shows a picture of parking. I can show you a picture of me parking the same way in my own backyard. My question is, does that mean that me and Jill then have to apply to become vacation rentals in order to get a small garage, put in our own lot, put in our own vehicle? Because if they can do that, then something needs to be easier for me and Jill to, to be able to park our vehicles and still have room for our snow machines and everything else that needs to happen. So, you can't just say yes to that and then say no to Jill and I, who would want to go, even if it was a one-car court for our, and I have a bigger lot than them. So, which, where do we go from here?
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, we're mixing up things a little bit here, but what you should be doing, and same as Jill's, you should be going down to the planning department and asking what your options are, because, you know, there's, there's development variance, applications that could be done, there's all kinds of things that could be done if you have problems, but I would just encourage you to go down and see Dean in the planning department and talk about those issues, because there's, we have to look at the situation, and when you got a 25-foot lot, it doesn't seem unreasonable that you can't have a garage. Mr. Strachan, you want to add to that?
Your worship, in reviewing what we have with properties, our bylaws that are in place, certainly should have that discussion. It certainly wasn't asked of me in the past three years, if we had been previous, but that would not be my response at this point in time.
Okay. I just don't want to spend a little time on a public hearing on talking about the, it's a side issue. I would just encourage you, and if Ms. Zacharias would like to go down and inquire, that would be the corporate thing today. Okay. Going up to the public for a second time again, is there anybody that wishes to speak to this zoning amendment by law for vacation rental, 424 Third Street East?
My name is Brian Fulbin, I live on Carty Crescent in here in Revelstoke, and I've been involved in this issue before with neighbors, and my concern, and part of the reason I'm here today is just, is to find out why applications get to this point when they're already a property. I think when a person is considering a property for a vacation use, they, they should be given all the information they need to make sure that the, the bylaw, the change in zoning that they're acquiring won't adversely affect the existing neighborhood. I mean, that's what all this is about, it's, it's about being good neighbors, and, and I don't know this couple, they sound like they're doing a fantastic job, but listening to all of their neighbors, I mean, you can't make that snow disappear, that, that's a foregone conclusion. And so, what I'm seeing happening throughout the city is that a person or a group gets an idea on a property and they try to shoehorn it in to the existing community, and it, and it's kind, it's like hammering a square peg into a round hole. Sometimes it just doesn't work, and I think, I think the work that needs to be done is prior to the acquisition of the property, if, if that's what your intended use is going to be down the road. So, if you need parking for four vehicles, you know, you might need an 80-foot wide lot or a, whatever, whatever, whatever it takes, or a deeper driveway or something, and I don't think it's fair to people that have invested in their community and expect a certain level of, of existence, and then have someone come in and, and totally upheave that. I mean, I've seen it where houses, I mean, you can't drive to the ski hill, coming up that hill without seeing a house that's being run as a husk, and there's, there's often 20 cars in the driveway. I'm talking of the way airport road just to come around that first corner up past the Elsova Bridge. And I can't imagine what it's like for the people that are on both sides that are stuck there, that they've got their homes and that they're either living beside a motel or a nightclub, and, and oftentimes it's both. So, and, I mean, that isn't a vacation property, but it, it doesn't matter, it's the impact on the people that are already invested in the community, and I, I don't think it's fair to, to, to totally turn that upside down. And, and I get it, that when it snows, he's got four cars on that lot, but there's no way, if, if we get a typical Revelstoke winter, that it's going to look like that coming, you know, mid-January. So, I, like I say, I'm, what, what I'm kind of tired of seeing is our, our inappropriate properties for this use trying to be shoehorned in to the existing community, whatever that type or of community might be. That's all I can say.
Going up to the public again for any comments on this vacation rental zoning amendment by law. Before you start, Brian, what is your street address?
1089.
Thank you. Can you read my address, sir?
Andy Siegel, 503 Third Street East. I can see the property for my house. I'd just like to pretty much follow up on what Brian said. Actually, I know the owner, one of the owners of this house, Bryce, he's a great guy, he'll be a great landlord, regardless of what happens there. Lucky and glad to have him in the neighborhood, at least in my opinion. But, just to kind of follow up on what Brian said, I, I totally agree that, I hope that this town, the council and everyone who runs this town will take into account that hopefully maybe setting a precedent, whether this property or other ones, to not turn Revelstoke just into one big vacation rental, because I think in the certain areas and locations of the town, it's definitely a good idea. People should have the right when they buy a property to invest and get certain returns on it if they want, but it's got to be in the right location and area, and I'm just not so sure that, especially the downtown core location is the spot that you want to start turning into vacation rentals. I know from personal experience from owning a condominium somewhere else, where it was all owners when I moved in, it's just a small little complex with eight units, and it was a totally different scene, and then all of a sudden, years later, everyone sold out and went to vacation rentals, and I'm just not so sure that people understand here who might be approving these projects, that if you've ever experienced living next to a vacation rental, because the thing is, a lot of the time, it can be totally fine, everything's good, but what you don't realize is, people come in at all hours of the night sometimes. One thing I just remember is, people having to take flights or leave at different times, and they didn't care, they'd be checking out sometimes at 4:00 in the morning, and they'd be like, don't they understand, it's like, you should pull your bags off the stairs, but they would just drag them up and down the stairs. So, vacation renters are not always so considerate when you've got your neighbors like Karen across the street who have to work at 4:00 in the morning. Those people don't take into account that these people are supporting their families, and that's what we're here for. So, I just hope people would realize that the parking, that's a whole other issue. Well, those four people that are staying in that vacation rental, they might have four people coming by to stop by who are staying in town, and then they park in front, and it happens to be right when the plows coming by. Our neighbors know to run out and move their cars and make room for the plows, but these people don't do it. So, if those plows don't go at the right time, and those frozen chunks of ice stay there, it can make our, you know, neighborhood not a good place to be. So, I just think there's a lot of things to consider with the vacation rentals. It's not just the parking, it's the noise, it's the friends that come by. I would suggest maybe a happy medium somewhere in between, like monthly rentals, where people aren't checking in and out all the time. You can still make, you know, better money off your rentals, there's a market for it, and it's just a lot less turnover, because when you have that turnover constantly in and out, that's what is not going to make the neighborhood happy. Plus, it can be just a lot of different people coming in and out. You know, we have a great core neighborhood there, been there 10 years, and hopefully we can keep it the same. You know, just yesterday, my neighbors came out with a little Christmas gift from their kids, and it's a great place to be, and I'm not so sure they're going to want to stay there if they see who knows what across the street. So, most of the vacation rentals can be okay, but the bad ones can really ruin things. So, I would just implore this committee to consider that, because it really changes that neighborhood. Certain other areas may be, but right there, you guys know what a house is, it's just tough right in, so that's about it. Like I said, we're lucky to have Bryce, he's a great, great landlord, I think, lucky to be visiting the neighborhood, but as I told him, maybe a monthly rentals or something else. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any comments from council or staff? Going back up to the public for a third and final time for any comments on this zoning amendment by law for Third Street East. Seeing that, I'm looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Counselor Nixon, Counselor English, follows in favor, motion is carried.
Your worship, offering forward that zoning amendment by law 2148, you read a third time.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion of the motion.
Your worship, I appreciate this young couple coming forward and renovating a house that really needed renovating, and I'm not going to go in favor of the rezoning to a vacation home. I think it can make a nice long-term care, long-term rental, and I see that there's work to be done to help.